Again of new hires for our district. Our first new hire is our new elementary counselor, Ashley, why don't you come on over here? Ashley Quoteer is from Princeton, she grew up in Princeton and went to Concordia St. Paul. And something unique about Ashley is she's sang on stage in Nashville.
Ooh.
She's bringing all sorts of talents to our counselor position here at the elementary.
I'm from Nashville.
Uh, another one is Ally Mantell. Ally grew up here in Mora, she attended University of Wisconsin Stout. And the unique fact about Ally is she hates potatoes, but we still hire her. Kirsten Mace is our new art teacher here at the elementary. She grew up in Northfield and attended Wisconsin Eau Claire. And she has eaten pigskin and chicken feet while she taught in South Korea, so a world traveler.
Yep.
And last but not least, we have Amy Schmitz. Grew up in Hinckley and attended the College of Saint Scolastica. And the unique fact about her, she's never been to the state fair. Maybe this year, maybe next year. But we're excited to add them to our crew here at Mora Elementary, and I know they're gonna do great things.
Alright. Thank you. Welcome to all of you, so happy to have you here.
Alright, I am super excited to introduce three fabulous new MHS staff. We have Ms. LeAnn Phelan, we have Mr. Chris Johnson, and Mr. Joe Melgren. And I'm gonna let them share a little bit about themselves right now.
Hi everyone, I'm LeAnn Phelan. This is my 21st year of teaching art full-time. And I'm just here from working for Ogilvy for 17 years, so my name is familiar. It's probably why I'm seeing it in the paper from things from Ogilvy. But I'm really excited to be here and be part of the Mora team.
Hi, I'm Chris Johnson, I'll be the English and Credit Recovery teacher here at Mora High School. And I grew up in Shoreview, and I studied at Grand Canyon University in Phoenix, Arizona. And I'm super glad to be here in Mora, super excited to start working in a couple of weeks.
And I'm, is that on? I can't hear.
It is.
My name is Joe Melgren, I'll be the interventionist at the high school. I'm from central Minnesota, I grew up on a dairy farm out there. My dad is 70 years old and still milking cows at his own, which is pretty impressive for him. I'm pretty proud of him for that. I have about 18 years of education in both the general and special education settings. And really excited to kind of bring both those experiences together.
Alright. And thank you for that, and welcome to you guys as well. Hope your year is great. Yes, you guys feel free, y'all take off. If you want to stay for the meeting, that's, it's always fun and interesting, but we also understand you've got lots of things to do and you've been busy all week, you know, learning a whole bunch of things there too, so. Alright, uh, next, next up, we have the first open forum. Is there anybody that would wish to speak during the first open forum? I don't have any slips up here, I don't know if anybody else had received any? Alright, seeing none, we'll move on. We'll have the building project update. Uh, I think Evan's gonna take over for Sean, 'cause we've got some technical, uh, issues there. So Evan, take it away.
Alrighty, good evening. Providing an update here for the Mora High School, new Mora High School building project. First slide Shane. Few milestones, um, we did get our building permit at the start of August. The summer, we were able to get ahead and jump on our site work and underground utilities, but it was a sigh of relief to get the building permit here and started on foundations. Uh, so we did have, we have gotten started on our foundations here for the last two and a half weeks. Site work continues, our storm water, underground storm water piping is about 90% done, so they'll be wrapping up here in the next few weeks. We have started laying curbs in our main parking lots. And we plan on beginning to pave the base course in a lot, about 50% of the site for asphalt and by 10 minutes here, end of September, so. Along with that, we're getting our erection on our storage buildings here, started today, Sherman started. They'll be continuing on that through the start of September. Should be able to get all four of them done here by mid-September. Two or three else of our milestones here this fall. Kind of the major portion of the next two mon, two and a half months will be our foundations and footings. But then pre-cast will start in mid-November and steel following in early December. The next nine or so slides here, we'll just review through some pictures. Uh, this is kind of an aerial shot of our latest drone photos. Overlooks the north side, uh, just above the trees there is a JV baseball field. Where the parking for our staff has been is kind of in the north half of the new high school, right around the CTE area. So our site progress has been really good through the summer, and we're getting ahead, and that's been a really good thing for us, getting utilities and so forth ahead as we get pushed into other activities with foundations, so. It's very encouraging. Uh, next slide Shane. This is above Ninth Street here. You can see kind of the curb lines that we poured the last few weeks. It's the outline of the east half of the new parking lot. And a little bit farther east is the new Wellyah parking lot. And just above that, on the south side of the Wellyah Center is where we began footings two and a half weeks ago, so. Today we had another pour, and we're moving up into the gym on the northwest corner of the Wellyah Center. Next slide Shane. This is just another angle of that area. Um, you can see the footing outline of the gym kinda on the bottom-left portion of the screen, and the locker room area, and, um, coaches' desk area. You can see the forming right above that parking lot, so. It's exciting stuff, getting going on these footings. The weather's been pretty good, so, um, we're excited to keep moving forward. Next slide Shane. Another photo here of concrete forming and rebar work at the footings and foundations. Next slide Shane. Uh, again, additional rebar work taking place at the locker room area. That was our first area, we're gonna work our way kinda north around the building and then progress north as we continue here through the fall. Next slide Shane. Again, another rebar and footings. Uh, these are some concrete piers that'll be bearing some structural columns in the foot, in the locker room area. Next slide. Uh, this is our north wall, west wall of the locker rooms. Next slide Shane. Uh, it's kind of a fuzzy picture, but this is another concrete crew we had on-site last week pouring the foundations for the, uh, one of the storage buildings. Next slide. And then again, this is, uh, this is kind of the main parking lot. On the left-hand side of the screen is the drop-off lane that'll come right up along the, uh, the main entrance. And that'll wrap around the north side of the main parking lot, so. Kerb works going good, and it's kinda, it'll be a nice, uh, thing for us to get in the base course of asphalt and so forth this fall. Get it sealed up for next spring and extra storage and so forth, so. Site work's been really good to get jumped on. Brief value engineering update, uh, we did start out with a goal of 572,935. Uh, we are currently at 476,652, about 83%. We did review this at our last leadership and oversight, and, uh, we're comfortable with where we're at, and we're gonna keep exploring additional value engineering options as we progress through here for the first half of a construction project, so. I think we're in a pretty good spot there for our value engineering. Next slide Shane. Uh, next, real review of the agenda. Leadership and oversights have been once a month. September and October here is continued site work. Working up on establishing and on the two baseball fields, get those ready to go here this fall. Get them hopefully planted here by the end of September. And November, December, uh, is when we'll start seeing some building structure go up with our pre-cast wall panels mid-November and steel and roof joists coming early December. With that said, summer '23, finish construction. Any questions?
It's wonderful, I know Dan and I took a little drive out there the other day and was out on the road that is, at least the road is kind of there, at least in dirt, and just able to sit and, and look around, and there was, I know the one vehicle out there with the gentleman in it who was just, he just enjoys watching the earth movers.
Oh yeah.
Yeah, so it's like, it's always fun, and hey, if, you know, that was great, he certainly not hurt nothing, and just, like you said, just enjoying watching that.
Yeah, exciting.
Yeah, very exciting times, so.
Yeah, and they, Evan, how far did you get today? Did they get all the pouring done?
Yep, and we poured over 100 yards this afternoon here on the footings and foundations here in K and J, so.
Yep.
It's a good day.
Yep, we had a visitor superintendent from Princeton Schools came to, uh, take some pictures and video of the Wellyah Center, the fieldhouse, they wanna try to get a fieldhouse like Mora. And so they brought some people over to, to look at that, and I was out at the tennis match, and somebody from Aiken was oohing and aahing over our facilities and could see the work for the new high school, so. A lot of jealous outside visitors of our facilities, so, um, the board should take note of that in the community.
I just wanted to throw out from the LNO, thank, thanks to the ICS team that, that, um, value engineering has been, been really incredible, watching you guys try to, to work those numbers down and coming up with great ideas to, to accomplish that, so, wanna thank you for, for doing that.
Thanks a lot. Thank you Evan, appreciate it. Alright, uh, next up, we have, it's always fun to switch classes, so. We've got online learning plan for the 21-22 school year. Pete, come on up.
It's dark. There was a slide, is it coming? It's okay, I can do it without the slide, it just has words on it. I have no fancy pictures. So, anyway, I've been working for the last, uh, couple of weeks on, um, the full online school. And, uh, our purpose was, um, you know, the, the state of Minnesota asked that all, um, schools apply for this kind of provisional waiver, um, to do an online school for this year, depending on what happens, um, with COVID and things like that. So our purpose was for those students who would prefer that option due to the pandemic. Right now, um, we at the high school are up to three students who have turned in their form, uh, to be a part of that. Um, and, uh, we can, uh, well, we, we can build in some capacity with that as we go, um, before we have to make some staffing changes to make things happen. The program we're gonna use for that, um, is called Edgenuity, um, and that, at the high school at least, and that is a, um, online provider that actually the ALC's been looking at for a couple of years. And they were very interested in, um, getting that program, so, um, we're kinda gonna be able to use that in that respect as well. And then at the elementary, I just found out, uh, about 20 minutes before the meeting, that we have, um, a setup there as well, contracting through something called Stars Academy, and we have 12 available spots there for elementary students that. Well, yes, that's right, they use Edgenuity as well. Um, but they have, uh, kind of their own teachers that oversee that, so, um, that kinda relieves some of the staffing issues at, uh, the elementary, and we have, I'll, I'll explain the staffing here in a minute, but. So at the high school, um, we have Chris Johnson, who is still here. One of our new teachers will, uh, is, uh, he was halftime credit recovery, and we've added to that by having him do, um, the online, full online students for the high school as well. Um, so we met today, um, we're gonna have some more training next week with the ALC and the credit recovery teachers that go along with that, um, to get us all learned on this new program and get that set up. We also, a few of the students who've signed up have, uh, IEPs, so some special education needs, and, uh, I'm gonna meet with Jenny Berry next week to get that squared away, to figure out how we'll still meet those needs for these students who are learning online, and make a plan for that as we go. And then we're also, like I mentioned, we're gonna use this program, that's a nice quote. Not my slide, that's okay.
Just claim it.
That's mine, that was me, John C. Maxwell, efficiency is the foundation for. Oh, maybe this is just telling me to like get to the point. Um, so, uh, there, we're, we're getting there. So, ALC and Credit Recovery will be slowly transferring to this program as well. Um, so they're gonna do the same training and be able to help Chris as he's learning it. So we have multiple teachers who are trained and ready to use this, um, as the need arises and as we use more things, so. With regards to that, with the, going forward with this, um, we have a provisional license for this year. There are a few things we need to do to extend that license, uh, if we'd like to, into next semester. Um, and I have them on the slide, I didn't write them down, but there, uh, just some things we need to report to the state, um, to continue that in the next semester, and then we can extend that further, uh, if the need and want is there to continue something like this at Mora Schools. So, we'll be kind of test driving this year and seeing where we go from there.
Yeah, um, I'll just follow up, uh, with a, a few more comments about this. The state has realized that schools, uh, you know, it's, it's different than last year, where schools were required to do distance learning, and I think at the beginning of the summer, some schools were, the deadline was August 2nd, and then they extended the deadline to August 27th. We have our, uh, approved through the state already, um, the first time. So Edgenuity, um, is a program that many schools are using, mainly because it's aligned to the Minnesota state standards, and also because the teachers are licensed in Minnesota. So a lot of other programs that schools used last year, uh, did not qualify because they're, they're not closely aligned to the standards, and they're not, uh, using those teachers. So I will be, um, asking the board as we move forward to give us some direction on whether or not we should continue to explore, moving forward, uh, an online program, and, and I'll ask Peter to come up with some ideas along with myself and, and Mr. Nelson and Mr. Qual on, you know, looking at some different programs. So far, Malaca has a program that's approved, Cambridge has a program that's approved, Pine City is in the process of getting a program that is approved through the state. So, um, and I think what schools are finding out is that there's a number of students, what number that is depends on a lot of different variables, that, uh, for whatever reason seem to perform better online, and it's not a big number, but there is a need out there. So, I guess we'll, we'll kind of find that out and, and sift through some of the things, and then find out, maybe report back to the board a little bit, and maybe we'll have a work session that will include some conversations about this, so. Any questions for Peter? He's, let's give him a little test run here.
Last time you guys didn't ask me any questions, and I really appreciated that.
Too bad.
Alright.
So you, you have three that are signed up for high school right now?
Correct.
And you mentioned the, um, elementary?
Yeah, so we reserve 12 slots. Do we have any signups yet?
We don't have any sign up, we have a parent meeting next week, and I have two that have registered.
Okay.
In email, so we're at, I think we're at four or five that are potential.
Okay.
We do expect with open house on Wednesday, that I will have some stopping to sign up. At that time.
Sure.
And you know, the benefit of that, keeping them with, we can only s- serve with a provisional, serve the students within our district. So, we're paying some costs for the, the outside, uh, provider, uh, but we're also keeping the other part of the funding within our school district, okay? So, uh, that's the reason why it's important that schools do something like this at this time.
That was it.
I can answer that.
In talking with the superintendent today, it's my understanding that if a parent wants to sign their child up, they have to do it now, and then there's no open enrollment until the second semester of the year, so sometime in January. So there's nothing that a child, you know, if things got bad, um, a family couldn't switch at any time.
So when we were, when we were going through this and, and kind of setting up initially, um, we, we accounted for that. The, well, the issue we had last year is we had students going in and out all the time, and it was very difficult for our classroom teachers to keep track of who was supposed to be where and what they'd learned and where they were when they learned it. So, because of the COVID situation, um, we're allowing students to go anytime, but if they would like to come back to in-person, they'll have to wait till semester. They'll have to finish the semester online, and then they can come back, and we can kind of reset and make the class sizes work, and the, the teacher can know where they were at with the learning.
And then if, if, uh, let's say it's Algebra II, I'm just picking a subject, um, and, uh, will, if they want to go the second semester, will the junction of be the same point? Because we'll be teaching different curriculum than they have, so it just meets the standards, that's all. But there's, so there's different math books and everything else. So at the semester break, do, does one program meet the other program? Is what I'm trying to ask, I think.
The nice piece about Edgenuity, um, and Chris and I were talking about this earlier today, is that, um, if you just take their whole course, it meets all the standards. If we have a student who goes, say, say after first quarter, you know, say we have an increase in cases, or for whatever reason, that student chooses to go, um, we'll need to get some information from their, say it's biology, from me, biology teacher. I'll say, okay, we've met these standards so far. Chris will take that information, and he can edit and change the, the coursework that they have to do within the program.
Oh.
So that it fits that. The same thing would be the case if they have only second semester. The teacher will be able to say, and, and we should have that, my goal is to have that really easy for the teachers, um, with the curriculum work this year, so they can say, nope, these are the standards we, they still need to meet for just second semester, and then we can customize that, that course for those students.
Thank you, that makes me feel much better.
That was a great question.
That, that happens a lot, just when kids move in from other towns, you know? You just. It's, uh, it's always been a challenge in education, you know, and, and even some courses don't align from state, you know, state to state. In 10th grade, it might be chemistry in one state and biology in another state, so.
Thank you Peter. Alright, next up, we've got the 21-22 Return to In-Person Learning Guidance Plan. What Dan?
Okay, so, a lot of this information has been shared over, so I'm, I'm just gonna go high level here a little bit, and then get into, um, some more information about, um, kind of currently what our, um, guidance and protocols have been, uh, or are going to be, and planning for the beginning of the year. And then I'll ask the board to have a discussion about, um, where these things are at. So if you could go ahead Shane. I guess when we compare last year to this year, um, a lot of things are different. Um, a lot of things unfortunately are becoming more similar. But the state had a lot of requirements in regard to how, how many different learning options we had. You know, hybrid, distance learning, in-person. Since the executive ordered, MDE no longer is enforcing any COVID mandates or requirements. They are providing the online learning that Peter just talked about. We will have flexibility up to 30 days, this is something that they've just added. So for example, if we have to change, let's say third grade has to go to distance learning because maybe there was an outbreak or something, we can have 30 days for each school to kinds of have some flexibility, and if we need more, we can ask for more. So, remember last year, they gave schools like five planning days, um, and that before they maybe changed models up to? So this is similar. So, and then, you know, last year, a lot of requirements in regard to the health protocols, um, and, um, quarantines, masking, um, so on and so forth. This year, they're leaving it up to us, local control, and, um, in, as it relates to COVID, and, and so on and so forth. Will still continue to report any positive cases. Masking is still strongly recommended for individuals who are not vaccinated, and currently masks are required, um, not optional on, uh, public transportation, and that's a federal guideline.
Dan, can I just, I have a quote, just a clarification, what does it mean to have 30 days? I'm not following what that means.
Yeah, you know, you're not the only one, uh, superintendents brought that up. We had superintendents from across the region, and, and they were asking that, and we really haven't got a lot of clarification from MDE. I think what the intent is that, um, let's say that there, uh, the high school had to go to distance learning. Now, and that's where it gets confusing with online learning, like Peters, these are kids that are gonna be all online. We're talking about kids are in-person, there has to be a change. We don't have, we're not having hybrid, so we, let's say that we're gonna have the high school distance learn. So we can do that for up to 30 days, and typically, last year, uh, primarily was because of staffing, uh, in our case, but, you know, let's say we do it for 21 days, we had maybe a group of, uh, a large number of COVID cases. So that's where they give the flexibility to have, uh, schools do that without having to worry about any of the other guidelines. So, I don't know a lot more about that Bob.
Okay.
And, but I can, I'll certainly update that as we get more information, so.
I just thought I was missing something obvious.
No. Well, a lot of the superintendents are still trying to weed through a lot of that information, and it's changing, uh, as we speak. I think one superintendent said 10 minutes is long-range planning nowadays. Okay, the next one please. This was updated August 4th, CDC. I think one of the common, um, goals, priorities, hopes, wishes, is to have our kids in-school learning. So in-person learning is a top priority. Vaccination is the leading public prevention strategy. Promoting them, um, will help students return. They recommend masks be worn indoors by all persons, that's a change from July, where they, they said only unvaccinated persons. They recommend three feet of distancing. They still recommend screening, testing, washing, staying home when sick, contact tracing, quarantining, disinfecting, all those things that we had last year. Schools should closely monitor local COVID transmission within their school, within their community, the vaccination coverage, and, and like I said, school COVID cases. So, the, the main difference from last year to this year is, uh, the recommendation versus the requirement. And they're giving local school districts control over making those decisions. And these decisions are hard, and they're difficult, and they're not clear. And last year, I think at the beginning of the year, they gave some metrics to how schools should, what model they should be in, whether be in-person, hybrid, distance learning. And what the, what the state found out, MDE, they changed that strategy into October because they were finding out that the county metrics didn't always match the school metrics inside the school. And so, for example, some school districts were in the 90s, their county numbers were in the 90s, but in the school, they had, you know, very few cases of COVID. So there, I think there, there is obviously a relation between the county numbers and the schools, but superintendents around the state are using more of those inside the school numbers to determine what type of mitigation strategies that they use. And there is no one right answer, uh, there is no clear answer. And, um, so that, that makes it difficult on, on all of us. Shane, can you go to the next one? So I just briefly outlined some of the guidance that was sent out by myself, and, and it was reviewed with the board for several days, right? And, and, uh, we were, uh, in agreement that here's where we are right now. We know that these are all subject to change, and we will closely monitor all of the, uh, cases within the county, within our school, and within our community. And so, learning models, I've already spoke about. Screening is an important part, I know when I talked to one of the board members. I know when I talked to one of the board members today, I didn't have a chance to follow up with public health, but we, we talked about maybe trying to get thermometers for families that maybe get them in their hands so they could take the temperatures of their students. We do have a screening tool that I've created. Actually, I took it from my brother's school. And we're going to use it here in Mora with his permission. And we're going to hope to get that out in the families' hands and use it for our visitors and stuff. So we are recommending all masks, all people wear masks indoors. It's required on the bus. Visitors will be allowed. We strongly recommend they wear masks. Vaccinations and testing, we're not requiring either of those. We will provide testing. We haven't figured that out, Ann and I. The state just came out with that a week or so ago, and so we have some work to do. But I think what we can commit to is we will provide that for our students and staff. Vaccines, we are working with Kanabik County Public Health to provide vaccines at our, I believe, high school open house. Positive cases and quarantines, there's been a few questions about that, and I think I'll probably have to go back and outline again for our staff and families. Any positive case is required to isolate for 10 days. That's not a difference. We will contact trace, but it, it probably won't be to the level that it was last year. I think schools just were not able to keep up with, especially at the high school, when you have a student traveling around as much as they are, you know, having to use security cameras and everything else, it, it, it's, it's really a lot of time-consuming work. However, we're going to do our best at it. And if we have a close contact, we will recommend that they quarantine and recommend that they closely monitor their symptoms and test. And that, that is aligned to MDH. It's, last year it was a requirement, this year it's a recommendation. That would be one area that if we want to tighten up a little bit, we could again require that. You know, schools maybe are in the fact of recommending now just because they know that when we quarantine, I think it was close to 800 and some students last year, there was a lot of lost learning time and it was a struggle for families. So that, that's kind of some of the thoughts going into the school year. The high school recommendations, last year, remember, we did not have sports start on time. Sports are starting on time. The high school league is aligned with MDH. They're recommending masks. They're recommending quarantines. They're recommending all those same sort of things. There are no restrictions for fans at this time. So it, it is quite a bit different than last year. And again, I think my recommendation to the board is to be prepared and in, in my communications to the families has been, we are going to be prepared to switch our strategy if we feel there is a need to switch our strategy. There is our current situation. I know that, I don't have it in, I think I have the cases here. We had a Kanabik County meeting every week and we reviewed the case numbers. And I think I've shared with the board, starting in June and July, our numbers were extremely low and they've ticked up. Right now, Kathy can correct me if I'm wrong, there's 47 active cases for the last 14 days in Kanabik County. Our case rate is 29.6, I want to say. And there are six current active cases of students, one active staff members that we're aware of. I know Kathy is a little shorthanded in her staff as well. So those are the numbers. We've used this dashboard last year to, to kind of give people a, an idea of where we're at. Those six cases out of all the students that we have is .003 and our staff is .004. We know however, that, you know, things can change quickly. And I think our strategies should be, we should be prepared to adapt quickly and change and be nimble in some of the strategies that we use. There is some of our guidance that we have. Ann and I are getting together tomorrow to update some of the, we're moving from summer school to regular school, so we're going to change some of that stuff. We have all of our plans on our website. And along with our preparedness plan, Ann and I, like I said, are going to review that tomorrow, along with probably the high school and elementary administration after that, just make sure we're all aligned. There's our new kindergarten students and our track students, so. So yeah, any questions for me or thoughts on where we're at and what our strategies are and?
Activities, coaches. You said the school district will highly recommend. Will the coaches be ordered to highly recommend wearing, staying home and following the same guidelines?
Stay home, you mean when they're sick and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Yes.
So the coaches will be ordered to, to, to do that?
I, I'm guessing that the coaches, meaning Chris, will request that they, they do that. I'll let Chris speak to that. But yeah, I'm sure they, they will be.
We're strongly recommending as a school district, correct?
Yep, that's right.
The entire school district?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And again, we as a school district, we can move ourselves, it's up to us to say, do we require or at this point strongly recommend? Again, the verbiage comes from us. Anybody else above us can only, the most they can say is strongly encourage, strongly request. It is up to us, local control, to say, do we require? What, what's the language that we're going to use? And I hear you, Bob, too. You know, same thing of, I think all of us, we all have the same goal of what was listed there, you know, we want to keep every single one of our kids in-school, in-person as much as we can. And there are some ways to better do that than others. I think all of us would rather have, hey, if a choice is mask or distance, yep, we're going to mask. Hopefully, we don't have to, you know, even go there, just like last year. We were moving different times for, moved to distance, moved to hybrid. You know, it ended up being pretty much, once we were in the one section, we were in there for a good long time. But it's just kind of the nature of the beast that goes with it too. So, and I saw Chris, I know she's kind of like over your back shoulder here. I didn't know if she had wanted to address that or?
When she gets up.
Oh, yeah.
She can't.
We have a coaches meeting on Monday, and that's, that's part of my appeal. The coaches says that we are highly recommending it and it's mandatory in classes.
Sure. Okay, thanks, Chris.
Yeah. I mean, I think from a board standpoint, what we need to do is just be aware that this is going to change day to day, week to week. Dan's been doing a great job at, at keeping people informed. And it's just going, the importance of that is, is going to only escalate over the next couple of weeks because we know things are going to change. We know things are going to escalate. We've seen it happen throughout the, the rest of the country. We know this county is, is a low vaccination rate county. We just need to prepare people that, you know, this is the way we're starting and we're going to have triggers to, to make changes as we see necessary. So one of the things I think from a board standpoint, we all have to be thinking about are what are those triggers, you know, that we can give guidance to the, to the district to, to go, what is the next step? I mean, those are the things that we should be thinking about right now or, you know, as the school district or as the school year starts, what are the things that we're going to be mindful of and watchful for to, to make those changes to, to try to protect our students and staff?
Yeah. We reiterate to what Bob said, you know, we all know COVID is not gone. It's not like we're saying, oh geez, we're at the very tail end, days of it happening, saying, no, this is a new variant, new things that we have out there. We made it through last year. We were able, you know, to survive. There's pluses and minuses and lots of learning, you know, going on. And we all have, you know, again, different opinions, different scopes towards that. It's so nice to have experts in the community, experts that we can work with to help guide us in all those, you know, decisions and, because again, we all struggle, you know, too, with where we're at with different things. It is, and I appreciate, you know, what Bob had just said too, saying, yeah, we know that the numbers just came out today. Next Monday might be different. Thursday, you know, things could change. We'll knock on wood saying, boy, we'd love it for, if mitigation efforts, if we can all, as community, get behind everything and keep them under control so we can have as normal a school year as possible. But we also have to be prepared, well, it, we don't have control over everything, you know? It, it, it's a disease, it's a virus, it happens. So I mean, we just have to be prepared to roll with it and it, again, it's much more in control than we are. We can just, you know, do what we can to help mitigate everything, so.
Yeah. Any other questions for me? I guess kind of what I was thinking about tonight, you know, I haven't had a lot of time to think about, you know, our, where our numbers are, but I think it's important that we communicate to our community and to our parents where our numbers are within our community and within our school. And, and, you know, reiterate that we, we will have to adapt if we continue to see an increase and that we will be adapting when we see an increase. And what that magic number, there isn't one, we just have to stay on top of it. And I guess one of my other thoughts was, you know, we, we can be strategic about these things. It might be one classroom, it might be one grade, it might be one school, it might be the whole district. We don't know. We can't predict, at least I can't predict COVID. We know that things are changing and we, we kind of have to be prepared for that. And I guess I would like to communicate that out to the community that things are changing since the last time that, well, I've sent out two things. In early August, we were in the, the low to moderate range and now we're in the high range according to the CDC. And we do have more cases within our school age students. So getting that message out and then strongly recommending that they send their kids to school with a mask.
Get vaccinated, you know? If you're eligible, all those things, again, we're dealing with the virus of saying, just like we have vaccine requirements for our kindergartners coming in, there's a whole list of them. This is just one more. You know, come in, we can use the tools that we have available. And by doing so, we can get as close to normal as we can. So just, that's what we are doing right now, strongly encouraging, saying, please get out there, wear it, you know, wear a mask. Right now, we are certainly nicely distanced and the things aren't too bad, but, you know, it is, you know, out there, so we can continue to do that. So please, get your kids vaccinated if possible, get yourselves vaccinated too. We want to get it back, get it all taken care of and so.
Good. Any other questions for me or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. All right. Chair, any requests to remove items from the consent agenda? Seeing none? Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved, moved by Matt, is there a second?
I'll second.
Let me see, who is? Oh, Bob, okay. Second by Bob. Any discussion? That there was a lengthy, you know, part of stuff there. The gift donation report for July are printed in there too. That's always a wonderful part to see. Was going to highlight a few of those. ICS had donated 48228 for the parade, for the water bottles that were, you know, for there. First Citizens Bank, the foundation of that, gave $20,000 towards the turf field project. Chris Goble gave $200 towards the turf field. Mike and Chris Osterdike, $1,000 towards the turf field. First Citizens Bank Local gave $3,945 towards the softball field irrigation. That is so nice to take a look at when they're redoing everything up there too of just, you can see how that, good that's coming in. Colwards, there are more rewards, 4644 for capable connections. And American Farmers Grow Communities, selected by Kanabik County Farmer Chad Varnick, $2,500 for the FFA. So again, we certainly thank all those businesses and individuals for those donations, you know, towards the school and the school district. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose, same sign? It carries. Next up, we've got, consider approval of the MOU for Education Minnesota Mora 1802. More high school implementation out of, of a modified block schedule for 2021, 2022 school year, preparatory and compensatory pay. Is in your package? Yeah, yes, please. Yep. No, I think if everybody, did everybody have a chance to go over it beforehand?
I think, I think the summary here is that the high school's going to a modified block. So on certain days, they'll have longer blocks, 90-minute blocks, I believe. And then on other days, they'll have a traditional seven-period date. So it's an opportunity to have a little bit of both. And Mr. Nelson had reported on this a couple of times last year. So really, it impacts the compensatory pay when they sub and then the amount that they get paid because the period is a little bit longer. So that's the summary.
All right. Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the MOU.
So moved.
Motion by Bob, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Matt. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose, same sign? It carries. All right. Next up, we've got approval of the substitute teacher pay rates for the 2021, 2022 school year. Dan, I'll turn that over to you.
Okay. Okay, so we're on here. Let me get to the right page.
Yeah, number 12.
I think I got to flip backwards.
Yeah.
Okay. So this has been a discussion last year, so I don't think it's anything new to the board. And schools are adjusting their subrates. Superintendents, being superintendents, like to compare things. And so in comparison to the other districts, I'm, I'm just trying to get the Mora subrate in line with where some of the others. A few are a little bit higher than us. We may be a little bit higher than others. We're not the lowest by far, but we feel that. Last year it was 125. I'd like to recommend that we go 130 with the sub. And then I'd recommend that we go 140 for retired Mora teachers. And the rationale behind that being higher is A, they know our system, B, they know our kids, C, they've been here and done that before and, and they're reliable. And it's really nice to have the same people coming back and back again. And so you get people like Barb Seaton and you get some of those other subs that are coming back time and time again. It's really good for our kids and for our system and it helps the administration when we have subs.
Was there a differentiation before? Or was it just?
It was $5.
It was $5?
Yeah. I think we should, we should try to increase that to $10 and, and I think to encourage those subs to come maybe a little more often.
And is that just prior Mora educators or is that any prior teacher?
I think it's prior Mora, yes, prior Mora retirees. Good question. Any questions on that?
What's the top end?
Top end would be 150.
Because I mean, you just do the math, $130 times 180 days is only $23,000. If a person were to work the whole year as a substitute teacher, it would be our teachers a lot more than that. So I, to get, to get them, if you think in the future that you need to raise it higher, I sure have no problem raising it higher. Because just doing the simple math, it makes no sense, so not to be at a higher rate.
Yeah, you know, that's, that's one, one teacher, you know? So, yeah, certainly, certainly an option. I mean, these are the numbers that I'm recommending based on the other area schools. Like I said, there's some that are a little bit lower at 125. There's some, starting out, there's some that are a little bit higher at 135, 140. And the top end might be 150. So I'm certainly not going to balk if you consider these a little bit too low. But I just want you to know that they're right in line with other school districts.
I think it can be a fluid situation as well. Like if we're going to struggle getting subs, this number will have to get addressed.
Right.
I mean, I, I have no issue where it's at, but if it's going to be an issue, or if it's going to attract more substitutes, especially certified, you're qualified, you know, let's bump it up if we have to. bump it up if we have to.
Thanks, Matt.
Exactly what I was thinking, so, trying to say.
That's a good strategy.
Yeah. Right now, I guess, uh, Chair would entertain a motion to approve either what's presented or if there's a change to that.
I'll make a motion to approve it presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Bob, second by Bobby, uh, substitute teacher pay at a hundred and thirty and a hundred and forty, to be clear. Yep, okay. So, that's a motion on the table. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Right, uh, next up, we've got consider the first reading of the following policy, the employee use of social media. This is the updated version, uh, from the proposed first reading before.
So, if you remember correctly, the last time we had, uh, social media guidelines, that there were some questions about, and we just felt it was important, the policy committee felt it was important to remove that and update it and bring it to board, something, uh, that was more agreeable, uh, with, with the teaching staff. Uh, so, we met with some teachers and there was some provision that, uh, we agreed on more. So, it is a policy that was shared by our, um, legal team and, uh, it's a policy that's used in many different school districts, so it's not uncommon. Um, so, this will be the first actual reading and, uh...
Yep, so just make sure to review it and we'll come back to it in most likely the September meeting. So, all right, and the next one up then is, uh, consider the second reading of the two following policies recommended by the School Board Policy Committee, the memorials and naming of school facilities, which is a new, um, policy, and then the internet use agreement form, which was an update, no?
Yeah, let me, the, uh, the update on the form, because I had a question on that. There was, um, there was a couple minor revisions on that and it had to do with, at the bottom of that form, there was like, instead of elementary school and high school and bus garage, it was trail view, um, fair view, and so, they cleaned that up. And then there was an area for passwords. So, in other words, the tech team would write the password on there. They took that out because that's probably not a good practice to get into is to write down somebody's password. I believe those are the two changes, yep. So, I mean, there was no change to anything else on the form.
Okay.
I just wanted you, it was just updated.
Updated form, okay. So, really, we would just be, uh, mo-, you know, motioning to approve the memorial and naming of school facilities, that policy, is that correct?
The second reading of those.
Yes.
Yep, and then we'll approve them next night.
Oh, okay.
I believe how that, that's how it's working. Kelly, or is it?
Yeah, you can do it that way.
Yeah, that's, I just had it in mind about the second.
Sure.
I mean, that, you know, but yeah, we certainly can, um...
Yeah, so there, it was just a, a, you know, change, very minor change to that, so there was nothing with the actual policy, it was just the form.
We can do it, we'll bring that up then, next month for the, the third one for passage. All right, um, next up, we've got, uh, board reports and administrative updates. Uh, any board member meeting, you know, updates? I'm kind of quiet.
All the, all the Rum River, uh, negotiations are done, so, uh, we're done meeting down in Cambridge, uh, every other day, so, uh, yeah.
It went well.
Yes, it did.
We, Bob and I, uh, um, learned a lot and it was, uh, I think, very fair and respectful and reasonable negotiation for Rum River Special Ed and it was a good experience for me, good practice.
Any other board members with?
Tammy. Board Advisory Council.
Well, ready, but you covered it.
Tammy was there.
I was heading for the Board Advisory Council meeting this afternoon, we had to, we had to have a man, it was cool, uh, early in the morning. Which is probably your, your listening.
I know, I know.
Late this afternoon, I had sent out something from East Central Regional Development Commission from Jordan, you know, Zeller, it was just updated numbers for our county, but the surrounding ones, it's just good information, you know, to have one to push, you know, to push that out there for him. So, he's economic development, you know, coordinator, so. Uh, other than that, our, the, uh, Teachers Union, we've been having, what, three meetings so far? I think we have another one here coming up on the eighth. Everything's going well and we're still in language, but again, that's certainly not unheard of. There's a lot of different things and wordings and that to go over, so. All right, um, we'll start with Chris, looks like activities, uh, community education update. Yeah, and the big stuff is, uh, twenty thousand from First Citizens Bank and then also ten thousand from, uh, I think it was Chuck Maslowski, is that right? I think they have ten thousand from a former, uh, Mora alumni too, which was a really nice donation, then some other smaller ones and that, but those were certainly the two bigger, you know, highlighted ones that had to came in, so.
I, I think on that report, I had asked if, at a meeting, a time or two ago, to find out when we're supposed to receive the money from the people that pledged. And I, have we ever heard?
Um, I, I don't know if the committee has decided, um, I don't, someone had to talk to Tammy, so some has come in, I believe she had, uh, several GR, General Ledger.
But when a person fills out a form saying that they pledged, do they have to a certain date to?
It varies depending on the size of, uh, it can be up to, I believe, three years for the larger ones and, uh, one year for the smaller, if memory, sorry, I just want to pop a memory off of that, I believe that's what it was.
So, do we know when we will receive the money at some point?
I have no idea, but ask Troy or, or, uh, or, I don't know, so Tammy, how much has actually, I know what they could, you don't ask them, you follow, track them, you know, upfront cash, what they should, they're like, just pledge, just like, ask for cash. So, question is, cash versus pledges, is Rum River, are the pledges to be addressed?
Right, yep.
Are you, are you talking about the, the managing funds? Is that what you're talking about?
Just the whole picture is when the school district will get the funds, because we're committed to the project, so.
Great, great. Oh, I just wanted to, you sort of, I will put up this.
Yep, no, I, I get, I get that, so. Yep, I'm just looking at the big picture, when all the money is due to come in, so that we don't burn down our reserves to cover things, so.
Hi, David, um, presentation, uh, on your, your packet, uh, Gail, and Cory, we're looking to remove some bus stops, add a bus stop, and remove some bus stops, or, um, you know, it's not that. Um, we had a driver meeting on Tuesday, which was a little, I think, a very happy, important, uh, fully staffed. Um, we, uh, we're so fortunate with the news articles and the local media in the cities about, uh, how we, districts are, uh, struggling. In fact, I shared with, um, Stan Forks, where they thought of contacting all their parents on Monday night this week, saying we can have such an application, but it's, 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 so, I, I'm thankful I didn't have to make that call and say, hey, we didn't have to use kiddos here, so, very, 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 so. Um, building two grounds, very busy this summer, we've still got some things to wrap up. Uh, lots of things happening at the elementary school. Um, the, the old gym, the original gym is, uh, got a total makeover, we painted the LED lights, new sound, uh, noise panels on the wall, and the sanding, we finished the floor, so that's a little bit of a good project to get done. Um, we did get our lead in water tested, uh, early June, I have not gotten results back yet, so I will report in April, so, we'll, 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 um, and, like I said, we're still wrapping up with some HVAC issues here. Um, we got a team coming tomorrow for one, um, item, and then next week we get everything open, um, but we're still, so we're pretty confident that, as I said, not, we're, we're proud of them, that they're going to do a good job. And, of course, COVID's in our mind, with the fresh air and all that stuff, and we got a pretty good run in the last year, so we, certainly, we're going to do with, uh, creating fresh air, to, 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 and, and, uh, um, any questions?
All right, so, if you want to have some fun, walk through the high school office. The last three weeks, every time Mr. Baki and I go through the office, there's another student registering and it's super fun for us because, you know, half of them are new to our community, so we get to welcome them to Kennebec County and Mora and a lot of them are from the metro area, actually. And then the other half are our old students that we recognize. We look at them and we go, are you who I think you are? And, you know, they, they change so much in a couple of years, you can hardly recognize them. So, we're up, uh, when I checked with Nancy and Grace today, we're up over fifty, um, from last year, and we do have about fifteen drops. So, um, you know, over thirty new students that we're expecting. So, we're super excited. It's fun to welcome them back and, and meet new people.
All right, quick foreign exchange student update. Uh, we currently have five. Um, we are working with a family and signing papers today for a sixth student, which would get two students from Sweden, two from Spain, one from Germany, and one from Turkey. Um, I wanted to do a huge shout out to our volleyball young ladies. We had a young lady from Germany that was registering and getting her classes, and we have a room in the high school called the stable. It's where the Mustangs go to hang out, where we do our registration. And I just mentioned to one girl, hey, there's a girl from Germany, she's interested in volleyball, you should go say hi to her. And the next thing you know, the entire team is running down the hall from the gym. They go into the stable, shoulder to shoulder, they all smile, they all say hi, and then they introduce themselves, hi, my name is, and I'm a junior. And they went down the line and did that, said hi, welcomed her to Mora. I'm sure it was overwhelming, but what a great welcome to Mora High School, it was amazing. Um, and the last thing I want to say is, Mora's a great place to work. And the principals and I are looking to fill a few more positions specifically in our paraprofessional, um, roles. If you are in the audience or if you're in virtual land and you're interested in making a difference in a kid's life, please get ahold of one of the principals. Um, we'd love to have a conversation with you and answer any questions you might have about working in our schools.
On that foreign exchange student note, I went to the cross-country meet today and one of the young ladies came in, I think, second or third, third for Mora. So, really cool to see her first race here.
Third for Mora, sixth overall. First place in her age group at the five K on Saturday, so, I know, so, yeah.
Just to piggyback off of Mr. Nelson's, our enrollment is up at the elementary as well. Uh, if we could spread that out a little bit, a lot of our enrollment additions have been in kindergarten and first grade, so those numbers are a little bit higher than we had anticipated back in the spring, but it was very encouraging. I think at the last count, we are up one more than the high school.
For sure, one more. This, this year, we have a, well, yeah, for this year, we have a new theme that we're gonna be, um, that we have posted actually right behind Mr. Baki and Mr. Nelson up top. That's not actually where it's going to stay, but we are, um, excited to celebrate this theme because we, we are, um, celebrating our similarities and differences together. So, our goal is just bringing all of our students together and no matter what shape, size, color, et cetera, you are, you are accepted here and we're gonna promote that as much as possible through PBIS. I have four kids coming in to run a booth, right where Mr. Nelson and Mr. Baki are sitting. Um, they're gonna hand out ICs. Just, I, I thought a good way to bring everybody together was handing out different colored ICs to say we accept everybody no matter what. Um, and we're just gonna keep promoting that the best that we can.
Just been very busy the last couple of weeks with, uh, IM4 training and intervention coordination training that we sat through. Um, Ms. Fusi and the social worker and counselor will head that up. We had substitute training, CPI training, and new teacher training this week. So, we've been all around the district in the buildings and, uh, excited to see the new staff and excited to see the rest of our staff return on Monday. Um, and we're just coordinating some data meetings this year to really hone in on that learning loss, um, uh, with our interventionists and the grade levels, uh, as much as, as possible throughout the course of this next school year. So, any questions about our?
Numbers are getting pretty high for kindergarten with twenty-two point five.
That's...
Aren't they usually smaller classes than that?
Usually, we try to shoot around the twenties. Uh, when we did the staffing, uh, we had seventy-nine students that were registered and over the summer, we had eleven. Um, so that we have two classes that have twenty-three, the other classes have twenty-two.
Did we used to have a, I, I guess it would be an unwritten policy on if the number was, hit twenty, that was an automatic thing to put on another teacher? I seem to remember something of that nature.
We have had some of those procedures in place. Uh, I wouldn't recommend that. I think when we had some of those procedures in place, we were able to get qualified candidates at this time of the year, and I don't think that's the case anymore. So, I would think we should address it differently, maybe through our para minutes or, um, additional intervention time rather than a, an additional classroom teacher.
Yeah, I think, I think historically, and of course, who's talked about past practice than a new superintendent, or I'm not so new anymore, but only been a year, but I, I, I thought what I've heard is that, kind of that magic number was around twenty-two, um, in class size, so.
Some of the challenges is when you have just that set number completely in stone, does one student trigger a ninety thousand dollar expenditure for the district?
Yeah.
Because it's a teacher and a para.
Yep. So, you know, we, right now, Randy, you're sitting at, uh, the class sizes are twenty-two and three of the four and twenty-three or in?
Twenty-two and two of the four, I think, and twenty-three and two of them.
So, where that threshold is, one strategy would be adding a few more para minutes, which would be easy to do, um, cost effective. The other would be to hire, uh, another teacher. Randy, you had another idea of pushing in an interventionist to the courses?
For additional time.
Yep, for some additional time. So, it's something that we're certainly thinking about, talking about, keeping our eye on. We had, uh, you know, we've had...
Our secretaries are really efficient on, on processing those registration slips, but other districts might not be as efficient too, so we wanted to make sure we knew exactly what those numbers were before we made a decision like that.
And so, like, like today, what, we had a couple new students this week, or four new students, and then we had a couple drops. So, you know, right now, there's a lot of variability into students coming and going, and I, I wouldn't recommend that we, uh, make a decision right now because I don't think the dust has settled yet.
Sorry, Bob.
I just brought it up because that's, was stuck in my brain, the twenty rule, so.
I'd hate to see it get higher, because those little ones need a lot of individual.
And I've had some conversations with Mr. Voce about that same thing. When it's one or two students, we're monitoring it. If it's, if we see twenty-four, then we have to make some different decisions.
Thanks.
I just had one other thing, just, you know, that, that's an awesome theme for the year, and I'm excited for you for it. It just, in, in addition, a suggestion would be the mask part and the inclusion of, uh, you know, not being judged, not being bullied, not, that that be a part of it as well. Um, because lots of people are, are, are going to come in with masks and lots aren't, and that is gonna be a difference that they're getting from home, but if, if, when we come together here at school, we could all come together and be together and not be judged by it.
And we've talked about that, and we're gonna address that with staff next week at our faculty meeting just to make sure that if there's any bullying going on because a student is wearing masks, that we stomp that out right away and draw it to our attention so we can address it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks. Bless you.
Okay, uh. A lot of these things I've already talked about, so I'm not going to, um, say too much about. We've talked about enrollment. One thing I will mention is student achievement data. That will be released on the twenty-seventh to the public. And one of the disclaimers, uh, that MDE is trying to promote is that, you know, the twenty-twenty-one data last spring, um, it, we have to take that into careful consideration without comparing it to past years because the students, remember, didn't take the test in twenty-twenty because they were in distance learning. And then, all the different changes in the learning models, the, the loss of instructional time by students and staff. And so, not just for the students, but for the parents and for the staff members. I think the focus should be on, you know, where we're at and what can we do to help our students regain some of the learning that may have been lost due to the pandemic. So, I will be coming out with some communication to the newspaper and to our parents and families with that, um, situation, and then, uh, we'll also release our data, um, that is embargoed until the state gives us approval tomorrow, I believe it is. So, probably on Monday or something like that, um, we'll have some press releases, and I'll share it to the board first, so you're aware, and then, uh, with the staff and then with the community, so. Just thought I'd share that. Um, the other thing would be state academic standards. There was a delay in those, so they won't be changing those for another year, uh, so they just hit the pause button on that process. Uh, learning recovery, I think the high school and elementary talked about all the different supports that we have in place this year to try to help students, uh, recover their learning. That is coming from, directly from our federal funds and, um, is part of that learning recovery that we're required to do, and, uh, we have gone above that learning recovery threshold of twenty percent. Um, so, and, uh, the other nice thing is that with these funds, we have until twenty-twenty-four to spend. So, even though we may be budgeted for something, we can adjust that as needed. Um, because they're, you know, like this distance learning option, last year, we never would have thought in, in the spring that we'd have that, no, that's now an expense that we have to take on, and we have, we, we budgeted something, but we didn't know exactly how much that might be, so. Any questions for the superintendent?
All right, we've got the updating dates to remember, uh, new teacher workshops, back to school workshops. You can read, uh, the list that's on there. Um, next regular board meeting will be September twenty-third at six-thirty back here. Correspondence has went around, I believe, it was just, uh, went over there. Is there any other board business?
I got a phone call, uh, this afternoon from a concerned citizen. He stated that he didn't get a chance to read the Times article, but that the headlines were something to the effect of, uh, uh, officer at the school's been cut because of budget purposes. And, uh, he just wanted, uh, to let the school board know that he believes that, you know, all he ever heard, we need a new high school because of safety concerns, because of safety concerns of our kids, and, uh, he believes that there needs to be an officer in the school, so he thinks it's stupid. And he said, I'm not blaming anybody. I don't know if it's the county, I don't know if it's the school district, I, but he just wanted to let the board know that he, he was concerned about not having a peace officer in the school, so. And I'm sure because of my ex, that's the reason I got the phone, phone call, so.
That's a good assumption, Bob.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, no, what happened is there was a partnership with Ogilvy-Mora Schools, Ogilvy Schools, Mora Schools, and the County Collaborative, I believe is the name of it, and Kathy's been at those meetings too, and, um, there was a reduction in that budget, um, and, uh, and, uh, that would have increased the cost of the resource officer and, um, and it was, I think there was a joint decision not to, to move forward with that. It wasn't a Mora or an Ogilvy or a Canaebit County. It's, the funding would have significantly increased, um, for everyone involved, and.
And when he was first hired, it was under, I can't remember if it was a two or a three-year, um, contract, if I, I'm looking at Kathy and some of us too, if I remember right, that was what it was, so.
So, and I, I know it has to do with some grant funding. Is that correct, Kathy, or something like that?
Local board made a time study, and that's very important.
But thank you for bringing that up, Bob, and, and maybe you can let them know that, that.
I knew it had something to do with the Canaebit County Collaborative Fund, so I did tell them about, I, I thought maybe the funds might have been cut from that, so. Yep.
Well, I have also heard from several concerned citizens, and so have some of my staff, about masks. Um, knowing that they do work, um, my mask protects you, your mask protects me, and when we get people together, it's one of those layers of protection that we can offer. Because the state, you know, there's no more, um, executive order. As Scott said earlier, we can't, you know, can't be mandated from that level, so again, up to the local district. We're starting already this year, and, and public health obviously is gonna take that utmost prevention role. Rather have, prevent the disease than have to react later by shutting things down or whatever needs to be done. We're starting this year at a much different level than we did last August. Last August, the number of cases in all of August was forty-two. The average age of those case, cases were sixty-six and a half years old. And then, um, as we rolled into September, October, November, November was nasty. We had four hundred and sixty-eight. It just went up and up and up, and we had mitigation in place. This variant that's here is more contagious, the R-not factor, which is the number of people it can affect, infect. It, with the old strain, the first strain, it was about three people. This one is seven. So, we're starting at, we have seventy-two cases already in August of this, and we're not done. I'm pretty sure we'll hit a hundred. Um, so we're already studying, starting double where we were last year. And without the main mitigations, which the ones that work best, vaccination. We're one of the lowest counties in the state. Our whole east central region is low. And then, without mandating, requiring masks, um, I know you're highly encouraging, but our community just doesn't seem to pay attention. So, I'm very concerned that we're gonna start the year, and we have, uh, the average age now is forty-four, just over forty-four years old, which tells me that it's most likely the parents of a lot of kids, as well as we're starting a little higher with the number of kids that are infected. And that age range is, we have one one-year-old, but then there's nine, ten, eleven, a couple eleven, a couple thirteens, and a fifteen. So, it's the age that can't be vaccinated yet, and from a public health perspective, again, we need to protect those kids that don't even have the option to be vaccinated. So, I would personally like to see, as will, um, a lot of the people that I've heard from, a strong, strong mask, you know, if the school board would require it, you know, that obviously would be the best. But I, I'm just fearful with the way the year is starting out. And last year, we saw it incrementally increase, forty-two, seventy-five, a hundred and eighteen, four hundred and sixty-eight. And, uh, we ended up flipping to distance learning at that point, before that point. Again, with the younger age, our, our sixty-five and over are seventy-nine percent vaccinated, which is fantastic. That offers that group a lot of protection. Our twelve and over is at forty-eight, forty-nine. Our hospital is busy. Um, you can probably attest to that. Um, they are very fortunate so far. They haven't had a lot of staffing issues, but when they're trying to move somebody out who needs a higher level of care than what can be offered here, they are running into problems. Diane said today that, um, there were nine ICU beds in Minnesota, four of them pediatric, and that's it. So, they're running into issues, and if you've seen what's been happening down south, it's slowly moving north. Illinois, I saw, did just, uh, put a mask mandate in place because it's coming north. I just really feel that we, at a minimum, need to protect those that don't even have the option of vaccination yet. And I know it's not a popular thing. Our community unfortunately is not taking the public health prevention aspect. I just needed to come say that. I know I've written it down twice to you now that this is the recommendation, highly, highly recommend from public health, and prevention is always better than reaction.
We definitely appreciate it and all that you do in working with us, um, through, throughout this whole thing and as it continues. Um, we, we hope that you can keep pushing that, that out to the public as well. Um, and as you heard us discussing, our, uh, our message is gonna be that we have to be very fluid moving forward, and if, if that means next week we have to make a change or the week after that we have to make a change, we're, we're gonna have to be prepared to do that.
And I would like to really know what those triggers are because we're supposed to be, you know, a, a assisting with some of those, or at least providing information, but, you know, we're doing contact tracing, um, to the best of our ability, but we're having more and more people refuse to give us information. We're at that age group where we're not getting information, and they're gonna be sending their kids to school when they should be in isolate, in quarantine.
And we're gonna run into the exact same issues, and if we mandated a mask, we're gonna get people refusing, and it's gonna be, it, we're all gonna run into those, those same issues, and we're gonna have to work together closely to, to do the best we can with it.
Do you have any thought about what those triggers might be or what that plan might look like?
I think that's what, when I, like I had said earlier, that's one of our, our next things that we definitely have to work on as a board as to what, what do the, what does that next step mean? What is that trigger gonna be for us?
Yeah, I can just speak on, on schools, you know, that there's some schools are using the five percent as kind of a, a trigger for masks and vaccinations, and, you know, that's one thing that we discussed, uh, as a board that I recommended we not use that because that paints us in, in kind of a corner, well, it paints us in a corner. However, that's kind of some of those thresholds that people are using. You know, I would say that we need to closely monitor our school data, like I mentioned before, and, um, and be ready to, to move quickly if, if that number really increases. And, um, I'm certainly not a medical expert. I don't know what that threshold is. Um, I do, like I said, I know, um, I think Anoka Hennepin is using that five percent rule as a requirement for masks, and, um, some of the, some of the other schools around us are as well. So, that's a conversation, I think, I'll maybe make some recommendations, or maybe the, the board has some ideas on what are some of those thresholds. We, like I mentioned, I, I don't know if it's good to put a threshold out there because, you know, maybe it's limited to a classroom or a grade or something like that where it maybe doesn't impact the whole school, so.
All right, yeah, thank you, Kathy. We definitely, you know, hear you, and, yeah. Any advice that you can, again, keep on bringing, keep on, all your statistics, we appreciate it, and, again, we are struggling because, again, even within six of us, there are six different opinions and six different things. The one thing I think we all can agree on is what is best for our kids, how do, how do we get there? And what, what is a specific thing, nobody knows, but it is much better, like I said, of to have the experts on board that can pass on that information, so appreciate that. Thank you. All right, Allison, come on up.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, you're welcome.
Um, first, I wanna thank, um, Kathy for speaking so clearly today. I also wanna thank, thank you Chairman Mo for acknowledging the difference between when the state was allowed to mandate and when they now have to strongly recommend, and where the line of authority and ownership and responsibility now lies here. Um, I feel that the letter that went out was not clear about that. I feel like it shared that it misrepresented where the state and public health lie in their position. Because last year was a different experience where the state and, and CDC had different, different abilities to make requirements that they no longer have, and we now have to rely on you. I, I really trusted that the school would have my kids' best interest at heart because you kept them safe last year. When I found out two days ago that you were taking away some of the only mitigation efforts we have for my ten-year-old, I was heartbroken, and I am really concerned. She has sacrificed so much in this last year and a half. We have been very conservative in our actions, in part because my husband works at Welya and previously worked at public health, and we as a family are responsible for the infection that he could bring to his patients, and he takes that responsibility, and we as a family take that responsibility very, very seriously. I, I am really concerned that my daughter loves coming to this school. She loves her teachers, she loves her friends. We have taken so much from her, but without you instituting a mask mandate, a requirement, and a, and a quarantine requirement for close contacts. She's a fourth-generation Mora student, and it takes a lot for us to withdraw her, but I don't see another path forward for our family. I'm really concerned, and the fact that it, the guidance you sent out was so last minute and so unexpectedly not in following the guidance of the links that you shared. and so unexpectedly, not in following the guidance of the links that you shared, honestly. And I will also acknowledge that I am here out of privilege because of my children's ages and because of my marital status. I spoke to a lot of people here, a lot of people in the community today who don't have the opportunity to show up here tonight. And I know some people were trying to watch online, and it was not available. It is not being livestreamed. So, I just wanna share that too, that it is not just Kathy, and it is not just me, but a lot of people who are impacted by illness and, and unmitigated spread don't have the luxury of coming here tonight. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. All right, is there anybody else that wish to address the board? Okay. All right, seeing none, we are now gonna be moving into closed session. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry, Anne, I was lying that way.
So, I'm speaking as a parent. I know I have a dual role, but I'm coming as a parent for my six-year-old as well. I too feel like the school board has a responsibility of a layer of mitigation that we can do, because they, they can't be vaccinated right now, and it will change. You know, it's going, it's gonna become available. But until it does become available, I do think we have every due diligence to do what we can. We know what layers of mitigation work, and I think it is best to be proactive than to infect multiple students who might not have been infected. It does worry me with the healthcare system and the fact that there's that many ICU beds available or not that many, that, that's scary. And not a lot of people think about that, but if your family member has a heart attack and needs to get transferred out, and there's no bed to take care of them, that's an issue. So, it's not just COVID, and it's not just a political aspect, it's keeping our kids safe, and we did a very good job. It was a trying year last year. As a parent, dealing with distance learning, as a working person dealing with distance learning, it was hard, and I don't wanna see that happen again. And doing every little bit of layer of mitigation that we can do can help prevent us from closing the doors. And I would hate for us to come back to school for a week and have to go to distance learning when we could have tried to prevent it a little bit. Thank you.
All right, is anybody else to address? And now I'll look all the way around the room. Sorry about that. All right, all right, seeing none, the board will now be moving into closed session. We'll take, what, a five-minute recess that, that it's, would be closed session at, to review superintendent evaluations. So, thank you all, have a good night.